All right, I want to welcome you to the Benton City Council November 25th meeting. I'd like to welcome our Boy Scouts and the representation they have here tonight. Thank you, between you and the Panther Soccer Team. We appreciate you coming because you actually have given us people in the council meeting room, so thank you for being here. We appreciate what you stand for and what you do. So at this time, if you would, please stand as Pastor Kyle Lou Allen from Holland Chapel will come and lead us in invocation and Councilmember Baptist will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we pray. Heavenly Father, we are reminded right now that you are our Lord, and so we give you thanks, because you're good, and your love endures forever. We are thankful for your mercy, we are thankful for your grace, we are thankful for your kindness. We're thankful for the city in which we get to live, raise our families, work and play, have opportunity to worship you, to build relationships and friendships. Want to thank you for the leadership of our city. Thank you for our mayor and these council members and the many others that lead and protect our city. And I thank you, most of all, for your son, Jesus Christ. I want to pray over this group tonight as they make decisions, give them wisdom as they're making decisions that not only affect tomorrow, but essentially and potentially affect generations to come. So give them wisdom to see what they need to see and know what's around the corner so that they can make the best decisions in front of them going forward. Again, we thank you for this incredible city that we live in. We ask for your blessings. In this week of Thanksgiving, again, we're reminded to give you thanks, because you are good and your love endures forever. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Cindy, would you please take role?
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Here.
Joshua Cash.
Here.
Evelyn Reed.
Here.
Bill Donner.
Here.
Jeff Morrow.
Here.
Judd Hart.
Here.
James Hertzfield.
Here.
Steve Lee.
Here.
Jeff Hamm.
Here.
We have Tim Present.
Thank you. All right, you've had a chance to read the previous minutes from October 28, 2019. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes.
We have a motion, a second, to accept the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to the service awards. Ms. Cindy?
Gary Middleton began his career with the Benton Fire Department on November 5, 1989. Is currently captain at Station 2 on B shift. Gary is married to Alicia and they have two children, Matthew and Brooklyn. Gary is also the chief of the Trask Wood Volunteer Fire Department and is a part-time police officer with the Trask Wood Police Department. Gary enjoys hunting, working on his farm in his spare time.
Chief Bill Ford's accepting that for Gary tonight.
Kevin Jones joined the Benton Police Department on November 16, 2009, as a communications shift supervisor, after having worked for Pulaski County Dispatch for 17 years. Kevin was born in Little Rock and graduated from Perrin High School. He is married to Tanya, has three daughters and four grandchildren. Kevin was the recipient of the Union Achievement Award in 2016. He loves building guns and enjoys playing golf.
Thank you all for the service that you give to our citizens. Okay, all right, now we'll move directly into a report from our Finance Committee. Councilmember Cash, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, I think not tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Reed, could you give us anything you've got for community services and animal control?
Yes, sir. At this time, I make a motion to have first reading of ordinance 81 of 2019.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance 81 of 2019. Please read it.
Ordinance 81 of 2019, ordinance recalling and amending ordinance 66 of 2013, amending the subdivision rules and regulations within the City of Benton, Arkansas, and for other purposes. Whereas the City Council of the City of Benton has determined that ordinance 66 of 2013 should be recalled and amended with a new section 5.3, exceptions as stated below. And now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas, section 1, section 5.3, the ordinance is amended to read as follows to it. 5.3, exceptions to required improvements. By request from the developer and with the consent of the Director of the Office of Community Development, the Planning Commission may permit special exceptions to be made to the improvements required by these rules and regulations when the following has occurred. One, the Planning Commission makes a specific finding that such exemption exemptions are in keeping with the intent of these rules and regulations. And two, the Planning Commission makes a specific finding that the exemptions will, no, exceptions, sorry, will be conformed with the design of the neighborhoods which are in close proximity to the proposed subdivision. And three, the developer furnishes any special information requested by the Planning Commission to aid in its determination. Should the Director of the Office of Community Development not agree with the developer's request, the developer may appeal the decision within 30 days to either the Public Utility Commission for all utility-related issues and to the Community Services Committee of the City Council for all other issues. Special exceptions shall only be granted for areas within the subdivision and not the entire subdivision. It is anticipated that all of the improvement requirements contained within the ordinance shall be abided by and included within the whole subdivision. For example, a subdivision may be granted permission not to include curbs and gutters within a specified area of the subdivision where it is not conducive to include those in a specific area, but the exception shall not be ingranted to the entirety of the subdivision. These special exceptions allowed herein shall be permitted only if the following additional conditions are met. A, each lot in subdivision is larger than 20,000 square feet. And B, each lot in subdivision is at least 90 feet wide at the beginning line. And C, existing plating within the neighborhoods which are in close proximity to the proposed subdivision meet both of the requirements set forth in A and B above. Section 2, because of the necessity of modifying the subdivision rules and regulations for the City of Benton emergency right declared, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
All right, thank you. We have any comments from the public on this? All right, any comments from the council? All right, hear none. Councilmember Reed?
Motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Please take a vote.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance 81 on the second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 81 of 2019 by the second and third reading of title only.
Ordinance number 81 of 2019, ordinance recalling and amending ordinance 66 of 2013, amending the subdivision rules and regulations within the City of Benton, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Hear none. Councilmember Reed, do you have anything else? We have to take a vote.
Yes, sir. Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause.
James Hertzfield.
Yeah.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
All yeses. Yes, sir.
All right, ordinance 81 of 2019, and the emergency clause is duly passed. Councilmember Reed?
I make a motion to adopt resolution 79 of 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 79 of 2019. Please read it.
Resolution 79, 2019, resolution ordering Energy Arkansas LLC to furnish certain information. Whereas Energy Arkansas LLC provides electric utility service from the municipality boundary of the City of Benton, Arkansas, City under authority of ordinance number 3 of 1966 as amended. And whereas the City of Benton, Arkansas, City is considering the acquisition of property that is owned by Energy Arkansas LLC that is located north of Interstate 30 and within the city's municipal boundary, except such property that is required by Energy Arkansas LLC to serve customers located south of Interstate 30 or outside the city municipal boundary. And whereas pursuant to ACA 14-201-10, the Benton City Council is empowered to order a utility to disclose certain information pertaining to utility services, now therefore be resolved by City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas, that section 1. Under the authority of ACA 14-201-10, the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas, hereby orders and requires Energy Arkansas LLC to promptly disclose the following information within 30 days. A, all reports, rates, classification, rules, or other practices currently in force on the part of Energy Arkansas LLC applicable to electric utility services provided to locations north of Interstate 30 and within the municipal boundary of the City of Benton, Arkansas. B, all books, records, and other information as to any matter pertaining to the business of Energy Arkansas LLC conducted north of Interstate 30 and within the municipal boundary of the City of Benton, Arkansas. C, a verified, itemized, and detailed inventory and valuation of all property owned by Energy Arkansas LLC that is located north of Interstate 30 and within the municipal boundary of the City of Benton, Arkansas. Section 2, Energy Arkansas LLC fails or refuses to comply with the order identified in section 1 without reasonable excuse, the City Attorney is hereby authorized and directed to institute such legal proceedings as may be necessary to cause compliance, including but not limited to the recovery of such fines and/or penalties as may appropriate and authorized by ACA 14-20102A and ACA 54-201C and E.
All right, any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Hear none? Please take a vote.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
All right, resolution number 79 of 2019 has duly passed. Councilmember Reed?
Sir, I make a motion that we have first reading of ordinance 82 of 2019. Second.
Mayor? Quick question.
Yes, sir.
If I would like to make a motion to this table, do I do it after the first reading or do I do it now before?
We need to have first reading, and it's my understanding that the utility commissioners are going to ask that we only take this up on first reading tonight only. Is that correct? That is correct. They're only asking for you to take up one reading of these two ordinances.
First reading only.
First reading only.
And if I want to table it till the next meeting?
It's going to be tabled because...
We're only doing one reading.
You're only doing one reading.
It'll be for second reading at the next meeting.
Okay. I know. That's not what I meant. That's the answer I was expecting. I could table it if I wanted.
Yes.
It's going to be tabled if it's for the next meeting, since only one reading will take place tonight. Unless there's a motion to disregard what the commission has asked for, then proceed on.
All right, please read it. Read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 82 of 2019, ordinance determining to acquire certain property of Energy Arkansas LLC that is located north of Interstate 30 and within the City of Benton, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. Whereas Energy Arkansas LLC provides electric service in the municipal boundary of the City of Benton, Arkansas, City in accordance with ordinance number 3 of 1966, franchise ordinance. And whereas Act 324 of 1935 established a process by which a municipal council could determine to acquire the property of a public utility by vote taken after a public hearing with at least 30 days prior notice and confirmed by a majority of electors voting thereon. And whereas the franchise ordinance specifically includes a provision authorizing the acquisition of Energy Arkansas LLC's property by election and compliance with Act 324 of 1935. And whereas the Public Utility Commission of the City of Benton, Arkansas, has requested the city to exercise its authority under the franchise ordinance and Act 324 of 1935, determined to acquire certain property of Energy Arkansas LLC that is within the municipal boundary of the city and located north of Interstate 30, except such property that is required by Energy Arkansas LLC to serve customers located south of Interstate 30 or outside of the city and to submit such determination to the qualified voters of the city for confirmation. And whereas BPUC has attempted in good faith to negotiate for the acquisition of customers and property that would be better served by BPUC, the Energy Arkansas LLC, but has been unable to reach an agreement. And whereas the Benton City Council hereby finds that the current and future citizens of Benton located north of Interstate 30 would be better served by receiving electric service from Benton Public Utility Commission than by receiving electric service from Energy Arkansas LLC. And whereas a public hearing was advertised to be held on November 25, 2019, to be conducted in conjunction with the consideration of this ordinance by the Benton City Council. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas, that section 1. Under the authority of ordinance number 3 of 1966 and Act 324 of 1935, the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas, hereby determines to acquire certain property of Energy Arkansas LLC that is located north of Interstate 30 and within the City of Benton, Arkansas, except such property that is required by Energy Arkansas LLC to serve customers located south of Interstate 30 or outside the City of Benton, Arkansas. Section 2, this ordinance shall not take effect until an election is held on the question of the City of Benton, Arkansas, acquiring certain property of Energy Arkansas LLC that is north of Interstate 30 and within the City of Benton, Arkansas, except such property that is required by Energy Arkansas LLC to serve customers located south of Interstate 30 or outside the City of Benton, Arkansas, at which a majority of the electors voting on the question shall have approved the acquisition. Section 3, upon approval by the voters, BPUC shall attempt to negotiate the value of the property described in section 1 for a period of 30 days, and failing such negotiations shall notify the Arkansas Public Service Commission and request a hearing to determine value. Section 4, all costs associated with or arising from the adoption of this ordinance that are attributed to and payable by the city shall be borne by BPUC.
Councilmember Hart?
I might make a motion that we table the ordinance if there's no difference in whether we have the first reading of the day or all three in the next meeting.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table the ordinance. Do we have any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
I would just reiterate again what Mr. Houston said, too. If there's no difference in the first reading today or the other ones tomorrow at the end of the next meeting, they know that that hard date's still there and we'll have three readings that day and save us having to redo the ordinance and everything else if that's the appropriate decision of the council. I don't think it's a bad decision to wait so that both parties know that this date's there. There is a hard date that's coming where we have to make that decision. Again, I don't see the necessary steps of having the first reading of the day if we're going to do both of them then.
Does that include table of nip until December 16?
Yes.
Is this just ordinance 82 or are you talking 82 and 83?
No, we haven't...
No, we haven't had 82. We're on 82 right now.
We're on 82. No, it's both of them, because I don't think there's a difference and the city's not out anything.
You want to amend your motion?
The motion, can I? We can only do one at a time, and I need to do 82 first while we're on 82.
I don't understand why the city's not out anything while we're having this first reading. If there's not a motion to suspend, it will come back for the next meeting, period. I mean, so it only does 2 and 3 tonight if there's a motion to suspend.
Without suspending the rules, it is tabled.
It is tabled.
Yes, it is. It is tabled.
So we're only doing the first and reading on both of them?
Right.
Well, that's the time spent reading the ordinance and reading the next ordinance when we can have all the information in three weeks and then we do it all at that time. So the time is the amount spent on the first reading.
Mr. Mayor, I will vote against that.
It's going to be read once, period, whether it's tonight or next week, and then a motion to suspend can take place next week by title only for the second and third reading. It's going to be read once, whether tonight or next meeting.
Mr. Attorney?
All right, we have a...
Does that basically mean that we vote this down tonight? Just vote against it or just we're not voting at all?
If you vote for it, it's going to come back next week or next month, okay? If you vote for it. If you vote against it, okay, it's a dead issue, and it will only be heard tonight if someone makes a motion to suspend for the reading of the second and third reading tonight. If that doesn't happen, then it will be heard next month.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor right now to table this until December 16.
Correct.
That is, table ordinance 82 of 2019 to December 16. Please take a vote on that motion.
No.
She's going to take role.
I am. Jeff Hamm. But you were...
You're on the stick.
Yeah, you are.
Paying attention.
You are. Jeff Hamm.
No.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Yes. Steve Brown.
No.
Joshua Cash.
No.
Evelyn Reed.
No.
Bill Donner.
No.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
No.
Steve Lee.
No.
So what is the vote?
Seven no's and one, two, three yeses.
So we have seven no's and three yeses, so the motion fails.
Yes, sir.
Now, one minute, I voted twice and that's an extra no.
All right, so we've had the first reading.
It's up to you.
It's Councilmember Reed, we've had the first reading of ordinance 82 of 2019.
And it is the wish of the commissioners that we just do the first reading tonight, correct?
All right, so Councilmember...
We'll do the first reading tonight and we'll come back in December and do the second and third.
All right, you got anything else from us?
Okay. This time I make a motion, we have first reading for ordinance 83 of 2019.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance 83 of 2019. Please read ordinance 83.
Ordinance number 83, 2019, ordinance calling a special election in the City of Benton, Arkansas, on the question of acquiring certain property of Energy Arkansas LLC that is located north of Interstate 30 and within the City of Benton, Arkansas, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. Whereas on November 25, 2019, the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas, the city adopted ordinance number 82 of 2019, determined to acquire property of Energy Arkansas LLC that is located north of Interstate 30 and within the municipal boundary of the city, except such property that is required by Energy Arkansas LLC to serve customers located south of Interstate 30 or outside the City of Benton, Arkansas. And whereas the purpose of this ordinance is to call a special election on the question of the City of Benton, Arkansas, acquiring certain property of Energy Arkansas LLC that is north of Interstate 30 and within the City of Benton, Arkansas, except such property that is required by Energy Arkansas LLC to serve customers located south of Interstate 30 or outside the City of Benton, Arkansas. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas, that section 1. There is hereby called and shall be held a special election on March 3, 2020, at which election there shall be submitted to the electors of the city the question of the City of Benton, Arkansas, acquiring certain property of Energy Arkansas LLC that is located north of Interstate 30 and within the City of Benton, Arkansas, except such property that is required by Energy Arkansas LLC to serve customers located south of Interstate 30 or outside the City of Benton, Arkansas. Section 2, the question described in section 1 shall be placed on the ballot for the election substantially the following form. Vote on measure by placing X in the square opposite the measure either for or against. For, the City of Benton, Arkansas, acquiring the property of Energy Arkansas LLC that is north of Interstate 30 and within the City of Benton, Arkansas, except such property that is required by Energy Arkansas LLC to serve customers located south of Interstate 30 or outside the City of Benton. And there would be, there's a box to check. Against, the City of Benton, Arkansas, acquiring the property of Energy Arkansas LLC that is north of Interstate 30 and within the City of Benton, Arkansas, except such property that is required by Energy Arkansas LLC to serve customers located south of Interstate 30 or outside the City of Benton. And there will be a box to check. Section 3, the election shall be held and conducted and the vote canvassed and the results declared under the law and in the manner now provided for municipal elections, and only qualified voters of the city shall have the right to vote at the election. Section 4, the results of the election shall be proclaimed by the mayor and his proclamation shall be published one time in a newspaper having a general circulation in the city, which proclamation shall advise that the results as proclaimed shall be conclusive unless attacked in the courts within 30 days after the date of publication. Section 5, a certified copy of this ordinance shall be given to the Saline County Board of Election Commissioners so that necessary election officials and supplies may be provided. Section 6, the mayor and city clerk for and on behalf of the city are hereby authorized and directed to do any and all things necessary to call and hold the special elections as herein provided. Section 7, if the acquisition of property is approved by the electors, the Public Utility Commission of the City of Benton, Arkansas, for and on behalf of the city is hereby authorized and directed to do any and all things as may be necessary or viable to effectuate the acquisition of property as approved. Section 8, all costs associated with or arising from the adoption of this ordinance that are attributed to and payable by the city shall be borne by BPUC. Section 9, that all ordinances and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
All right, do we have any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, ordinance 82, passage of it is a prerequisite for consideration of ordinance 83, so it would be appropriate just to, well, just to do first reading only.
All right, Councilmember Reed?
Sir, at this time, I ask for the first reading of ordinance 84 of 2019.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of number 84 of 2019.
Ordinance number 84, 2019, an ordinance amending, revising, and restating the animal control ordinance of the City of Benton and for other purposes. Whereas the City Council ordinance 34, 2013, created the City of Benton Animal Control Code for the city. And whereas the code having been amended several times since its enactment in 2013, including earlier this year. And whereas it is the desire of the City Council to restate the code in its entirety and to add additional modifications to same by modifying section 12G to state that all pens or enclosures where chickens, ducks, fowl, or other fowl are kept shall not be less than 50 feet from any resident or business establishment, which is a reduction from 100 feet. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas, section 1. The City Council does hereby adopt the City of Benton Animal Control Code, which is attached here to exhibit A to this order, is now incorporated now, if stated word for word. Section 2, the city clerk of the City of Benton shall maintain three copies of this ordinance for the public to view and inspection. Section 3, ordinance 34, 2013, as well as ordinance 18 of 2014, ordinance 40 of 2014, ordinance 41 of 2014, ordinance 61 of 2018, or 17 of 2019, ordinance 57 of 2019, are hereby repealed to the extent any conflict with the code adopted herein but not otherwise. Section 4, other ordinances which are in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict but not otherwise. Section 5, if any part of this ordinance shall be held void, such parts shall be deemed severable and the invalidity thereof shall not affect the remaining parts of this ordinance.
All right, any comments from the public? All right, comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, what's occurring here is that we are revising and restating in one document the animal control ordinance.
one document the animal control ordinance. There's only one change from the existing ordinance, and that pertains to the distance that a chicken coop or other such structures may be from a house. It's going from a hundred feet to fifty. That's the only change.
All right, Councilmember Reed.
Motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
All right, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second, third reading.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
All right.
Motion to adopt ordinance eighty-four on the second and third reading by title only.
Ordinance number eighty-four, twenty nineteen, in ordinance amending, revising, and restating the animal control ordinance of the city of Benton and for other purposes.
Any comments from the public? All right, comments from the council? All right, Councilmember Reed, do you have anything else?
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance number eighty-five, two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance number eighty-five of twenty nineteen, in ordinance annexing certain territory into the city of Benton, Saline County, Arkansas, declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas Havens Development Company LLC filed a petition with the county court of Saline County, Arkansas, annex certain contiguous property hereinafter described to the city of Benton, Saline County, Arkansas. And whereas on October the twenty-first, twenty nineteen, in case number CC twenty-nineteen dash fourteen, Jeff Erie County Judge determined that said petition should be granted and that the property hereinafter described should be released from Saline County and annexed to the corporate limits of the city of Benton, Saline County, Arkansas. And whereas more than thirty days has expired since entry of said order, and the city of Benton desires to accept said property into the city, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of City of Benton, Arkansas, section one, that the property hereinafter described be annexed and made part of the city of Benton, Saline County, Arkansas, and is to be included in Ward five and zoned R two, single-family district detached housing, and is described as follows to it: It's proposed Woods of Hurricane Lake Estates subdivision. And you'll see a parcel number there along with the legal description. Section two, it is hereby found and determined that immediate passage of this ordinance is necessary for residential development, which will benefit the growth of the city and local economy. Therefore, emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Comments from the public?
Oh, he thought that was...
Good evening, Eric Richardson, Richardson Engineering, and I'm representing Todd Havens, Havens Development on this. Just wanted to let you know that I'm here if there are any questions. This request is by a hundred percent petition from the developer, would like to annex approximately twenty acres into the city for a subdivision. This has gone through city planning and been approved, also gone through utility commission or PU, I'm sorry, DRC, and been approved also. And we, that's what we're requesting tonight. So, I'm here if you have any questions, thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Make a motion, uh, to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Motion to adopt, uh, ordinance eighty-five on the second and third reading by title only.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number eighty-five by the second, third reading title only. Comments from the public?
Eric Richardson, again, this is Mr. Justice, he actually lives adjacent to this property, if I heard correctly, is that, did we move on to that one or did I jump the gun?
No, not yet.
Same one, okay, I'll be back. Okay, any comments from the council?
Did I read it by, did I read it by title only? I'm sorry, okay. Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Eric Richardson, again, this is Mr. Justice, he actually lives adjacent to this property,
if I heard correctly, is that, did we move on to that one or did I jump the gun?
No, not yet.
That's the next.
Same one, okay, I'll be back.
Okay.
Okay, any comments from the council?
We'll make your last.
Did I read it by, did I read it by title only? I'm sorry, okay. Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance eighty-six on the second and third reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance eighty-six by second and third reading title only.
Ordinance number eighty-six of twenty nineteen, in ordinance annexing certain territory into the city of Benton, Saline County, Arkansas, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Do we have any discussion from the public, from the council? Here is now Councilmember Reed.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause. Second.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
And ordinance number eighty-six along with the emergency clause is due to pass. Councilmember Reed, do you have anything else for us?
Yes, sir, at this time, make a motion for the first reading of ordinance eighty-seven of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance number eighty-seven of two thousand nineteen. Please read ordinance.
Ordinance number eighty-seven, twenty nineteen, ordinance accepting certain utility pump stations along South Shoreline Boulevard for maintenance, declaring emergency and for the purposes. Whereas the Public Utility Commission has authorized certain pump stations be accepted into the city for maintenance pending approval by the City Council. And whereas the City Council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, desires to accept said pump stations for maintenance by the city, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, section one, the special warrant deeds which are attached heretofore collectively as exhibit one, which describe the location of certain pump stations along South Shoreline Boulevard are hereby accepted for maintenance by the city of Benton, Arkansas. Section two, because of the need to accept the pump stations into the city for maintenance, emergency hereby declared, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
All right, do we have any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Mayor, I assume this is all in working order and met all of our expectations?
Yes. They were inspected prior to this coming here.
Motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second and third reading. Please take a vote.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Second.
Jeff Hamm. I thought I already voted earlier, you just go pass me by. Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance eighty-seven on the second and third reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance eighty-seven by the second, third reading title only.
Ordinance number eighty-seven, twenty nineteen, ordinance accepting certain utility pump stations along South Shoreline Boulevard for maintenance, declaring emergency and for the purposes.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Motion to pass the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
I'd like to introduce and make a motion to adopt resolution number 80 of 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 80 of 2019. Please read the resolution.
State and city, street program, project resolution, resolution number 80. A resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Benton to utilize state and street monies for the following city project, Benton overlay. Whereas the city of Benton understands that state aid, street program funds are available for certain city projects at the following participating ratios. Reconstruction slash resurfacing, the work phase preliminary engineering, state percent is 100%, city is 0%. Construction of city projects, the work phase right-of-way, state aid is 0%, city is 100%. Utilities, under work phase utilities, state aid is 0%, city is 100%. Under work phase construction, state aid is 90% and the city is 10%. Under work phase construction engineering, state aid is 100% and the city is 0%. City projects, programmed but not let to contract, work phase, all phases, state aid is 0%, city percentage is 100%. Now therefore be resolved by city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, that section one, the city will participate in accordance with the designated responsibilities in this project. Section two, the mayor or his designated hereby authorized and directed to execute all appropriate agreements and contracts necessary to expedite the construction of this city project. Section three, the city agrees upon completion of the project to assume the maintenance of the right-of-way by city forces and/or others, including utilities and individuals, in accordance with prevailing Arkansas Department of Transportation regulations. Section four, the city agrees to improve the existing sidewalks by city forces and/or others to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act as required by federal regulations when improving streets. Section five, the city pledges its full support and hereby authorizes the Arkansas Department of Transportation to initiate action to implement this project.
Do we have any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Please take a vote.
Steve Brown?
Yes.
Joshua Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
All right, resolution number 80 of 2019 is due to pass. Counselor member Hamm, do you have anything else?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, not at this time.
All right, thank you. Counselor member Donner, do you have anything for us from personnel, health?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, not at this time.
All right, thank you. Counselor member Hart, do you have anything from Parks?
Not at this time, mayor.
Thank you. All right, council member Hertzfield, do you have anything from public authorities?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce resolution number 81 of 2019 to do, go down.
Second. We have a motion to second for resolution, the first, the reading of resolution number 81 of 2019. Please read it.
Resolution number 81 of 2019, resolution ratified and confirming the reappointment of Jim Martin as commissioner to the Public Utilities Commission and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Benton created the Public Utilities Commission by ordinance 46 of 2004. And whereas the city council desires to appoint Jim Martin to the position of commissioner of the Public Utility Commission with a term of office ending December 31, 2028. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, section one, Jim Martin is hereby confirmed as a member of the Public Utility Commission.
Any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate y'all's support for another term and would request respectfully that if you, from the council, would double my salary.
All right, any comments from the council?
I won't be lied, we'll just share for it.
Y'all need to explain, it's zero.
Everything, when you're 10 times zero, it's still the same, zero. So, we're good with that. All right.
Joshua Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
Yes.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
All right, resolution number 81 of 2019 is due to pass. Anything else? Counselor member Hertzfield?
No, sir, mayor.
All right, thank you. Counselor member Baptist, may I apologize if I didn't recognize you during the agenda meeting, but do you have anything from the A and P commission for us to report?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. We met Thursday and voted to, in February, we're gonna pay an additional $700,000 against the principal on the bond, and which will help, help us pay it off quicker. And if we keep, if they keep going like they're going, the bond should be paid off in 2021 for the event center.
That's great news.
Yes, it is. If we can do that well with River Center, that would be greater.
Anything else? Do we have any unfinished business at this time? Do we have any unfinished business? Do we have any unfinished? Well, as exciting as ordinances and resolutions are, I've got some actually exciting stuff
to talk about. First of all, I really appreciate mayor having the opportunity to come and talk to the commission, or to the city council about what we've got going on at Benton FC. And if I may, I'd like to make a few introductions of some of our team here. For those that can't recognize me from this eight-game winning streak beard, for the Benton Panther football team, I'm Terry Benham. I'm the general manager of Benton FC, also the chairman of the board of directors. And I have our esteemed staff here, coaches, Mitch Glass, who's our club director, and Joelyn Hickey, who is our club registrar. She also assigns our referees. Dan Wilson, who's our head women's coach, and Chip Bosley, who is also one of our women's coaches and is assistant coach for the Benton Panther, Lady Panther soccer team. And then we'd like to have all of our coaches here, but unfortunately, you know, after about 4,000 volunteer hours, people have day jobs, too. And so not everybody was able to make it, including Mike Magnus, who is our director of coaching, but also our head men's coach. Benton FC kinda got started, just to give you a little background. Benton really didn't have a true soccer program here. I mean, our high school's always competed pretty well, but we didn't have a true club program here. So what happened is that all of our parents had to travel around and go to other programs, Little Rock and Moll Mail, and then go away to these tournaments all over the state and actually even the region. Sometimes in Tulsa, Chip has, one of his sons, actually both of his sons, but now one, played in club soccer in a different program and has had to travel all over the place, to Tulsa, to Memphis, et cetera. And so we formed this out of a travel team from the Boys and Girls Club. But since we didn't have a real club, we never got to play a home game. So we went for two years without playing a home game. So we played on the road every single weekend. And my kid was one of those kids, and Coach Mike, who's not here tonight, was the head coach of that. And so we kinda put our heads together and said, you know, we ought to start something here so that parents and kids can plug in and they're not having to run all over the place and run themselves ragged. And who knows, maybe we'll even get a home game. And as it turns out, we just had this nice football stadium right down the street that nobody was using. And so we started using CW Lewis as our home field. And in the, over the course of the last two and a half years, we've kinda given that new purpose. And so that's, I wanted to come and first of all, thank the Parks Department. I don't know if Stephanie's here or not. There she is. Stephanie and her team over there have just been amazing partners. And I just can't thank all of y'all enough for the partnership that we've had with our Parks Department and the mayor, who is, listen to me talk about soccer, I get kinda excited when I start talking about this because of all the good things that that's going on. And I've got some of our players here tonight. Hey, guys, why don't y'all bring the hardware up? So we're about two and a half years old. And earlier, we had, we had a meeting with the Parks and Rec Committee, and you guys invested in our program and helped us get it started. And we haven't forgotten that. And because of that, we felt like it was important for us to go out and prove ourselves. Well, when we started this program, when I first approached y'all, we had 58 kids and I think three soccer teams. And all of them were boys' teams. Now we have boys' and girls' teams. We have 13 teams and over 200 kids. And I could probably have 400 in the spring if I had a place to put them. But we just really don't. But this is the result, and this is only part of the result, because we've got several other, other wins and trophies and things that we could bring, not to mention all the kids that participated in those, those teams. But this, this year, we had 13 teams with a combined record of 70 wins, 46 losses, and 17 ties. That's pretty darned good. There's a lot of Major League Baseball teams that would love to have that record. And so, and, you know, the credit goes to these coaches and these players who are, who are outstanding. Y'all remember the travel team that I talked to you about, that was the basis of that? Well, all of those kids now will be juniors at the high school. And where we knew that we were on to something, that we were, we were doing something that y'all helped us do, is when we had 11 of those kids try out as ninth graders for the high school team. That was two years ago. All 11 made the team. So that, that freshman class, I think there were, I take that back, there was nine freshmen and two upperclassmen. But we had nine freshmen from that class that made that team. And now they'll be juniors on the high school team. Some of them actually started last year as sophomores. And so we're building program depth for not just our club, but also for the area high schools. Not all of the kids play for Benton High. Some of them play for Bryant, some of them Boxite, and some of them Harmony Grove. But we're building real depth to the sport by virtue of the investment that, that you made and the continued partnership that we get from you. Thanks, guys. So, what I wanna, what I wanna bring to you tonight, outside of our thanks, is something for you to think about over the holidays. Because I'd love the opportunity to come back and chew on a few things for real. But we've come to a point that this group of volunteers and coaches and myself, we've kinda gone as far as we can go with the, with the things that are available to us. The bottom line is, we need space. We don't have a Midland Park like Bryant does. If I had a Midland Park like Bryant does, this program would be twice, if not three times, the size that it is right now. I mean, you've got 400 kids over at the Boys and Girls Club, and, you know, the purpose of our program is to be the bridge between the Boys and Girls Club, where they kinda love, learn to love the sport, and the high school, where they're competing at a very high level. And the space in between those two is where we occupy. So we take them from the Boys and Girls Club and we train them to be soccer players. So by the time they're ninth graders, they can make the high school team. And we can, and we don't rebuild, we reload every year. And so, what I need the city council to kinda